We're tonight at thirteen discussing right guidance related to North Texas municipal water district twenty-four general obligation bonds.
Yes, sir. Back in November fourteen, the citizens approved issuance of general obligation bonds in the town for the principal amount of six point one one five million for permanent public improvements and public purposes for constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, equipping, and improving water and sewer systems, properties and facilities. It was conveyed that the bond proceeds would facilitate improvements to the town's existing water tower and be used to construct infrastructure required to facilitate the transition of the town's water supply from NTMWD to DWU. The bond proposal identified five point five million for construction of sixty-six hundred linear feet, thirty-six inch water line, valves, connections, and a two point oh million gallon ground storage tank. Six hundred forty-five thousand was identified for the maintenance of the existing water tower. Since that time period, staff has had numerous meetings and conversations over the past three years, one seeking approval from DWU to approve the town as a new customer, and two for NTMWD to either modify or renegotiate our existing contract, which expires in 2027, to allow the town to utilize NTMWD as a secondary water source. To date, DWU has not formally approved the town as a new customer, but per their actions, they are supportive. NTMWD, on the other hand, has not expressed any support for modifying the existing contract, citing concerns of additional cost or adverse impacts to their other customers. In September two thousand fourteen, MTMWD Director Tom Kula and the board rejected our official request for a determination regarding the process for terminating and/or renegotiating the existing water supply contract. That position has been remained constant and has been reaffirmed twice by the Director Kula, once in two thousand and fifteen in July, and then in August of two thousand and sixteen. As reported in August sixteen, earlier conversations with DWU indicated the need for the town to update its water master plan, which it has, and it identified a particular project with an opinion of probable construction cost, and that's outlined in your packet. Six hundred forty-five thousand dollars, as I said, was identified for the maintenance of the existing water tower, but that tower is no longer required, or the maintenance is no longer required, as the existing tower is going to be removed from the current system here this month. Historically, case law allows up to ten years for approved bonds to be issued without the Attorney General requiring additional approval by the voters. With NTMWD's unwillingness to modify or renegotiate the current contract, staff recommended that infrastructure improvements outlined in the two thousand and fourteen general obligation bond be completed somewhere around twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three in anticipation of the contract expiration and prior to the ten-year anniversary of the bond issuance. In December of two thousand and sixteen, Mesquite, Garland, Plano, and Richardson requested the Public Utilities Commission of Texas conduct a review of water rates charged by NTMWD for its member cities. The PUC accepted the appeal in June two thousand and seventeen and then sent the case on to the State Office of Administrative Hearings for further proceedings. The judge has scheduled the case for initial hearings to start in May of two thousand and eighteen. Just this last month, staff met with Assistant Deputy Director Billy George, and he again reaffirmed their unwillingness to modify or renegotiate the current contract, citing the ongoing PUC water rate review and the fact that any modifications would require unanimous consent from all thirteen member cities according to their bylaws. Absent any previous unrecognized legal measure that could be taken or additional guidance from council, again, staff recommends planning for making necessary infrastructure improvements to assist with the transitioning to DWU in the two thousand and twenty-two or the two thousand and twenty-three time period.
Thank you, Sean. Counsel question to conduct.
Ma'am, I have a question, just like you did behind the agenda, and appreciate you allowing that to be added. After reading through this one, what I understood is, we made prior request to NTWMD and they rejected all three, plus Deputy Director Billy George rejected the fourth one because of the lawsuit. You can also understand that other than the legal path, I don't know if any other route are there for us to get another contract. Do we have any other path other than the legal approach to get out of this NTWMD contract at this time?
Not that I'm aware of. We've discussed it with the town attorney, we've discussed it with two other attorneys previously to this, and nobody has been able to come up with, there's not a cancellation clause in the contract.
And I appreciate the staff recommendation to complete all the infrastructure by twenty twenty to twenty-three. I understand the timing for the board, but what I do not understand is, do we know what other requirements to get DWU accept as a customer? It says, well, indications are we are moving the right direction, but I can get a clear indication that, can, will DWU tell you, what do we need to do to get accepted?
We have done everything that DWU has required of us. We've updated the water master plan, we've had conversations that have dated back to when Alan Hendricks was our town engineer, Justin, they've all indicated this is exactly how can be done, and what could be required, they've required infrastructure. But early on in the process, we were between a rock and a hard place. DWU would sit there and say, we don't want to officially take you on as a new customer until you have release from NTMWD. NTMWD would sit there and say, we don't want to release you until you have approval from DWU. So it's, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Kind of felt that we were being played between both of them, just to kind of keep us where we're at. DWU, over the last two years, have been extremely supportive and identified, and engineers have worked together when we're updating the water master plan to figure out, infrastructure-wise, what would it take? Physically, how could it happen? And that's all been identified. So again, when Jovi Puckett was the director, and now she's the interim ACM, she has always been very accepting. She has said that most of the time, a new city comes to them, has to come with usually a, their own water supply. We don't have that, but that's why she was very interested in us being able to secure a position with NTMWD to where they would still be a water supplier, but just in a secondary role and not a primary role. We've discussed and made recommendations as to could be phased in over time? Is there a way for us to take some of our obligation, our take or pay, and assign it to a city that's growing faster than us, so that way they take some of the responsibility? But any one of these, they have several cities that are in these particular situations, and they said, no, we're not entertaining any of that, so we've not been able to get NTMWD to negotiate on any path that we've tried to project.
My question is, do we know clearly what are the steps we need to take to transition from NTWMD to DWU? Can we get that, writing, agreement, otherwise we switch from one party to the other? That's normal, the other end.
Yes, sir. We can secure that at this time.
Maybe schedule a different schedule.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So, sorry, Christian, would you please go ahead there? I was just going to recommend that, what I wanted to say first, it appears to me that the argument from North Texas hinges on the statement that's in here that they're not going to support any modification of the existing contract, as they cite concerns of additional cost or adverse impacts to other customers. And I think that's a matter that I recommend we discuss in executive session at our next meeting with our legal counsel. And if our legal counsel, if our town attorney thinks we need to bring in a special legal counsel for this discussion, so be it, but I think we need to, we need to see what our options are. This is a vivid disagreement. Okay?
Yes, sir.
We'll cut the discussion a little short tonight on that. Everybody okay with that?
Perfect. But again, thank you for bringing this.
Oh, thank you very much for doing the issues. Very much appreciate it. Okay, Mayor, Council Section fourteen, discuss concerns regarding odor from Garland wastewater treatment facility.
Johnny's going to present on that, sir.
You're going to let Johnny present on the stink? Good evening, Johnny.
Hello. So I made contact with wastewater plant on Duck Creek, talked to their plant manager, and they are going to start adding disinfectant in, so. I didn't get an exact date when they're going to start doing it, as of last week, they're going to start adding any disinfectant. I'm going to set up a date for me to come in, meet with them, they're going to walk me through the plant, show me everything that's going on in the plant, and they said they're very willing to try to address any concerns that we have. That's pretty much all I have right now.
So the feeling is that whatever they're going to do with this disinfectant will eliminate this burden and stench that's been plaguing us for decades?
I don't, I don't, I don't say that that, I'm not going to tell you that, because I believe if I told you that, I'd be lying to you.
Well, I'm a little confused, because I seem to remember a statement from one of their public works directors a couple of years ago, how they were going to buy this mitigation equipment, and they were going to install it.
That's, that was, that was what I was told as well. They, as of right now, they haven't got, I guess, the funds in to do, to put in, I think it was like twenty million dollars. And what I, what I'm told is, they've done it, put their other plant, the Rallett plant, and this will be the next plant. I don't have a date, I don't have a, when that's going to happen.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
That seems to be really loosey-goosey, right? We got, we got an issue in town, and we will do something, and it may happen, it gets done, I can see Johnny, right? We need maybe a little more stronger answers, and what that, maybe, I don't know the answer there, because there are citizens who have expressed concern about this one.
Yep.
Kind of more engineering than throwing disinfectant. And again, I'm not, I don't know that won't solve the problem, but if that's okay, they should have done it ten years back, right?
Did he say that it would help the odor?
So, he says, he says they are not using them right now.
Why?
But they, I don't.
Not deodorant.
Yeah, a deodorant, deodorizers.
So, is that about the other plant?
No.
There's one plant already done something.
The water?
Did you say there was?
No, they have, they have two plants. They have a plant in Rallett, they have a Duck Creek plant. They went in and put in a whole new system in the other plant. That's, that's what they're saying they're going to do here eventually. I don't have, I don't know when they're doing it.
I think it's a, it's a two-stage approach. They, they can go in and they can put in a disinfectant, or depending, and if there's going to be a question I was going to have, I'd like for you to ask them, is, are they going to put something in to mask the odor? Are they going to put something in that eats the odor? They're two different things. But what they did at the Rallett plant, they did this thirty years ago, a little longer than that, because it used to stink. And they went and put in carbon filters, and that is a humongously, I'm surprised they can do it for twenty million at this one, because that is a rather expensive mechanism of doing that. I've kind of dealt with some of that stuff before, but I don't want to put perfume in water. I want to know if they're putting perfume in the air, because that stinks, that's just perfume with stink. And there are mechanisms out there that literally pass themselves molecular to the odor molecules and generally neutralize them. I just would like to know what that mechanism is, just as a question, if somebody on council understands that stuff, who wants to know?
I mean, I know that there's ways of doing it. I mean, Dallas has a plant that's in the middle of a bunch of homes, and they've got, like you said, like the carbon filter stuff, and there's no odor whatsoever.
Done right, it works.
Yes.
So, we obviously have some residents here tonight that are concerned about it, and they've been concerned about it for years. And we have a, I guess, it's an infrequent pattern to this smell.
Not infrequent.
Not if you live by it.
Okay, what I mean to say is, it's not every day sometimes, right? Some days you'll have an off day, some days you'll go ten days in a row, or whatever.
Don't they make it okay?
It's up at night. It's creepy, doesn't it?
Yeah, I know that. I'm sorry, I do not.
You can send people out there all day, and they can say they didn't smell it during the day, but that's.
I know it's mostly at night, but we'll get the most complaints. So I think what I'm going to recommend, John, is that we, we need more explanation, so we can give that to these people.
Yes, sir.
If somebody from Garland wants to come and visit with us and tell us what they're going to do, so the folks here can hear it from them, and we can have a certain degree of accountability that's not on you, which I'm sure you would appreciate.
Mayor, I would like to say this, though. This can't be the first time they've heard about it. I'm not talking about ours now. So they need to be bringing to us more than, well, we're going to start putting more disinfectant in. This is something that has been going on since I've lived out here, and I'm on the other side of town. They, it's not a, I mean, I understand that some, they got to have the money to be able to do the proper thing, but for them to waltz in here and say, well, we're going to start putting drops in, and we don't know for other, we're going to do anything for another ten years, is not the right answer.
Agreed. That's why we need somebody to come here, so they can understand it.
But preparing, are we going to be asking some questions?
I, I have, I partied with Mayor Adams on a different matter, but he did volunteer that if we don't get the feedback we need, let him know, so just let me know if you're up to go.
Yes, sir.
We'll take care of it, we'll try to take care of it.
Is it too soon to bring it back in a couple of weeks?
They were trying to help you for the December.
December eleventh, yeah.
Well, listen, General Trump, we're going to do everything, we can't have somebody here on December the eleventh to further detail what their plans and expectations are. And so we can question and see what's happening. We appreciate your patience in this matter. We're not going to give up, but yes, ma'am?
Do I still, can we still speak?
If you want to, yes, ma'am, please, come on in. Hi there.
Hi.
Can we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Sandra Child, I live on Rebecca Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Right at the corner, we're at Head Stores, Highway eighty. I've owned my property for forty years. This problem has been going on for thirty.
Yep.
I cannot enjoy the outside of my home, ever. We have porches, we would never invite anyone, ever, to sit on them. We have small dogs, we walk every day in and out of the house, and we hurry up to get back in, and sometimes odors in the house. I have often wondered how anybody could build on Rebecca if they spent twelve hours on it? And I dare anybody to open their windows at the top of Trip and drive down Rebecca around the corner and the whole way with the windows open, most days. Sometimes it's better because of the weather conditions, which, if we have good south wind, it'll push it away, but I believe it's there just about twenty-four hours all the time. And it has been a bane of our existence, ever since we've had our lovely home there, which we enjoy. So I mean, it really puts a damper on family get-togethers, on having a barbecue, enjoyment of my property. It has really been a problem for thirty years, and no matter what they say, nothing gets done. So I'm kind of bewildered why they could say they've got something that they might be able to try, and you said there is something that's been done somewhere in Rallett, why can't it be done here?
It's money.
And then every time you look at that plant, it looks like it's grown. You know, it looks like, it used to, as you came down the hill, it looked like a little city or something. Now it looks like, you know, completely whole town there. It seems to be expanding all the time. So I would enlist you to do something, because I don't see how, it may have had something to do with the, the lack of development on Rebecca Road. So I enlist you to try to do something about it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comment.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, please come forward? Yes, ma'am, fill in your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Alfonso Montes, I live at six three four East Trip Road, right on the other side of Rebecca. And you'll have to bear with me, with all due respect, I'm an ex-marine, so I'm going to be blunt. I find it incredible to hear this person. I'm used to accountability at the, at the top, so to come in here and have him have to come and speak, when, with all due respect, you've been a mayor for many years, and I guess I need to be at these council meetings more often. I've lived here for nine years. This smell is unacceptable, and I, I don't know if I can even ask this question, but I would like to see the people on the council raise their hand that this smell reaches their homes, because.
It actually reaches half the town, if the wind's right.
Well, then, my question still comes back to accountability for the town council. This is like, my taxes keep going up, but what are the services? Where is that taxation with representation? Because I'm not getting those services. It's totally unacceptable to me, and I keep getting, I keep arguing with Dallas appraisal district that why do my taxes keep going up? What am I going to argue them, that if I were to want to sell my house, really, there's a depreciation because of that smell? If somebody comes and tries to buy my house, they're not going to buy it with that smell. I live right on the other side of St. James. You're going to sell two million dollar homes with feces smell and sewage smell? So I'm coming to you saying, you are all accountable as a town council, not to accept the answer or to blame down the road? He should have never had to come and say what he said. I would expect those conversations between you all and them not to send an employee of the, of the town. You all know that this has been in existence for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. Anybody else I could come forward, please? Good evening, go ahead, your name and address, please, sir.
Mike Sage, one thirty-seven Rebecca Road, unfortunately all, but this problem's existed ever since I moved at my place. And at one time, I thought we kind of solved the problem. He's been known as manager of the sewer plant, and we, she knew we had an issue, and I had to direct the number, the caller, when that smell started coming in, and she'd shoot it with whatever to kill the smell, but I have no communication with him anymore. But that would be a simple way to at least solve it for right now, is get some kind of line of communication. When it does smell, it's, it's make a phone call, and they can do something about it. And also, I'd like, maybe, somebody, since we got an economic developer, it's going to get the economic impact on that side, especially in our development. What is it actually cost us if that subdivision, that mean, our subdivision was filled up? I know it's not going to sell like it is, but think about how much money would be receiving from taxes if that thing was available to develop. But I mean, this is kind of the real status of where we're at. I mean, it's hurt our, you know, we don't know when we can sell, if we're forced to sell houses sickness, well, that's going to kill ourselves out there. So at least get the phone, the phone call in there, where you can get something done right then. That would help until we solved the issue with the Garland system. Is that good?
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it very much. Yes, sir. Could we please have your name and address?
Yes. Judge C. Cook, six eight eleven Long Hill, Dallas. I'm the builder for the two homes in St. James. My company, Trinified Homes, actually built those homes in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And St. James is a development of forty-nine lots, two acres plus, and we've only been able to sell two lots to customers outside of the town in Sunnyvale. I think people that are in Sunnyvale are understanding of this issue of the smell, and so we try to overcome objections, but this is definitely a large objection. Both of my clients in St. James, I think they spend over forty-five thousand dollars a year towards their property taxes, and a large portion of that goes towards the independent school district. So I think in terms of lost revenue over the course of, you know, five-plus years, if you calculate that times forty-nine lots, there's a lot of money that town, as well as the city, or the school district is losing out on because of certain objections such as this. I think from an approach on how the council should take it is rather more legal and more forceful in allocating dollars towards defending the situation and really showing how much of lost economic value and growth has occurred due to this situation.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, could we have your name and address also, please?
My name is Terry Reed, I live at six three seven East Trip Road in Sunnyvale, Texas, and I was the founder of the Chamber of Commerce and chaired it for fourteen years, and fought this battle for over twenty years. Fortunately for you all, I'm tired and older, but if I still had all the fire and brimstone in the belly, I would have brought you a little plastic bag of feces to put in each one of your locations, so you can enjoy what we've had to live with now for decades. There was a woman named Beth Bassett, they came to her father, they wanted to put the sewer plant on his land, he said, no, it'll ruin the town. Beth Bassett was a wonderful, brilliant woman, very underappreciated or respected or admired, but for her generation, she was unusual in that she had an education, she had a music degree in education from Baylor. She was very poor at the end of her life and riddled with rheumatoid arthritis and in terrible pain all the time, so when you see her around town, she'd always have gloves and, you know, knitted cap, and people would make fun of her. She couldn't afford to let, air conditioning. She had it, but she couldn't afford to pay for it. So she laid down there for years in the burning heat, smelling that stench, riddled in pain, for years of her life. If there was anybody who did not deserve it, it was the daughter of the man who said, no, I don't want it on my land, it'll ruin our town. Many people have suffered, and it is ridiculous, and it is the responsibility of government. If you're going to position yourself as leaders, then it's your job to lead and make it happen. Now, we may need to go to the city of Garland and say, we pay you for processing our sewerage treatment, we want some sort of an abatement, we want something, pressure them on the financial matter. If it's twenty million dollars, I don't care if it's two hundred million dollars. If we need grants, if we need help, we may need a private sector committee, which I would be delighted to chair, I'm sure you're surprised to hear, but if it were up to me, I would be able, and I have the wherewithal, to bring in world-class nanotechnology scientists. I would find a solution, and I would make it happen. Now, this, what we used to say down here in agriculture is, well, maybe it's since we're agriculture, you think that since we don't mind smelling animals, we don't mind smelling human feces. That's not exactly accurate. But it is an economic development issue with St. James Place. Gabriel Barbier Mueller has poured millions of dollars into beautiful streets, lighting, fencing, tremendous amount of, all sorts of trees and, and other beautiful things, but who in the world is going to buy a quarter of a million dollar lot, build a million dollar house, and you can't invite your corporate executive friends over for an evening of cocktails because your patio smells like human feces every night? Now, I've heard you talk, yeah, I'm going to tell you something, if this were Stony Creek or Stone Canyon, if this were Paul Cash's addition, he would have smelled it about two nights, and then it would have been over, and he would have been down here. It would have, something would have happened. But this thirty years of going on and on, there's no more excuses, no more, well, they told us this and that. Now, Pat Wiley can't be here because his mother-in-law had surgery today. He's willing to testify with the telephone, if you're willing to hear him testify with the telephone. If not willing, he's authorized me to speak on his behalf. He's a former town council member, and his cousin, Sheffy Gudang, was former Dallas County Council. And Dallas went to Garland when they had the D.R. Horton addition development, and offered to help with the engineering, and they were rejected. Now Garland did go, and they fixed their other plan by, you know, Rallett, and that's why they have fire control. That technology's there. So no more excuses, no more gonna do it later, maybe someday. No, no, it is time to say, you're going to do something, and if you don't do it on your own, then we will do whatever it takes, you know, but it's, it's got to get fixed. And there are other people in our corner. Our greenhouse, as you know, owns a hundred acres. Our Green Haw, as you know, owns a hundred acres on Highway eighty. His cousin, Larry Jeffis, is a very good friend, very supportive. Larry couldn't be here tonight, he's just had major surgery, he's in recovery. But he was on the Garland City Council, and he's willing to help us. There are people that are willing to help us, that know what's going on and why it's like it is. But it's up to you to say, no more. No, we are not going to allow our citizens and Saint James Place... Let me tell you, when we did the two thousand nine Sunnyvale con harvest festival, we were doing a site walkthrough to Miss Fisher's farm on the complete other side of Highway eighty. And we're walking through, in the middle of the day, and somebody said, "You know, I don't think Miss Fisher is taking care of her septic tank." I said, "Oh, no, honey, it's not Miss Fisher. You're getting to smell what we smell every night, it's so strong lately, you can smell it all the way across the highway." You say, "Well, that was a long time ago, you know, two thousand nine, golly, it's two thousand eighteen now." Well, at the last city council, uh, meeting that I attended, when we had all these people from East Ford Road, if you noticed what they were saying to each other, they're having enmity among neighbors because they don't think each other's taking care of their septic tanks. We said, "It's not that. You found the Garland sewer treatment plant." Again, can you imagine if Cheryl Jockamontsey or somebody that lived in Stone Canyon came up here and told you that it smelled like feces at their house at night, how long you'd put up with it? I'm saying you would put up with it five minutes, much less forty years. So Elvia Cervantes is not just some person that lives on Trip Road. She is an auditor for the Food and Drug Administration at the highest level for safety in food plants, pharmacology plants, and medical device plants. And when she comes out here and says to me at dinner, "Have you noticed that smell? What is that smell?" I said, "Yeah, I notice the smell." The smell is so bad in your house sometimes that you're walking through your house and you go, "God, did the cat have an accident?" And then you go, "Oh, no, it's the sewer plant." Or you get home at night in the summer and you get out of your car and you think, "Will I throw up or pass out by the time I can get into the door here?" You think I'm exaggerating? What possible motive could I have to lie about it? Who would come down here and brag about that? Who would want to say that they lived like that? Who would want to say that their town allowed them to live like that for this many decades? It did nothing. So, I hope that you will either appoint a citizens committee, or you will assign it to Sean, or you will do something immediately with strength and teeth. No more, you know, well, they said, because as they told Pat Wiley seven years ago. They said, "Yeah, we're, we're getting, we're gonna do it, you know, it's coming soon." So, that, that's not wor- that's not valid, and there's no point in believing them. They don't have a track record of honesty with us on that. So why waste any more time, not another minute, on, on their excuses? And if you don't know what to do and you can't figure it out, then assign it to some people. We have brilliant resources in this town. We have educated people. We have people that are scientists, and people that are business people, and people that have track records of success. And if you can't figure out how to fix it, I know there's people in this town who can. Let them do it. But one way or another, this, this cannot continue. And I thank Sajid George for getting this on the agenda, because just getting it on the agenda and having it spoken about and giving us a chance to come forward and speak in public has taken me over twenty years.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to make comment? I think, Sean, we want to get somebody from Garland here.
Mayor, can I say something?
Please.
I've always known this is a, a problem. I didn't realize the severity of the problem. Not one of the people that have come up here tonight have come to me and said, "Mark, this, it smells like stink over here every night." Now, by the same token, over the years, uh, I know that the odor has been there. I realize there is a documentation issue, 'cause one person's nose isn't the same as another person's nose. Trust me, I was thirty years in the industrial ventilation, air pollution control business. I know what they're talking about. And that's why I knew about the disinfectant scenarios and those mechanisms. We need to get TCEQ involved with this. And Terry, Terry is right, there, there are mechanisms. First of all, TCEQ can go to that plant and say, "Are you following best recommended practices?" This stuff is documented, this isn't rocket science, we don't need a scientist to figure this out. As pointed out on the Rowlett plant, this can be done. Garland just hasn't done it because it's not their citizens. That's the reason why the Rowlett plant was done. Fireside didn't exist out there for another twenty-five years after they did the mitigation procedures on the Rowlett plant. I know, I used to drive by, I used to fish in the creek over there, many, many years ago. We need to get in touch with TCEQ, find out if best practices are being used, find out what the documentation is toward best practices. I know that way we could be shooting ourselves in the foot, because we do depend on Garland, Garland to take our weight. But I think that's something they kinda have to do, just because that's the way the, the lines are in the ground. But we need to do more than live the near service, which is what has happened much to a number of people's attempts to try to correct this stock problem. I think that we are the council that will get this problem fixed. We just have to put our, our focus on it to make it happen. And the only reason mine hasn't been there, I, I know it smells when I drive over that side of town, but I'm not over there every night.
Every inch we can attack this from is gonna make it much easier. I mean, as always, there, because of our relationship with the city of Garland, there's politics that does not excuse the town for doing everything it can to get this fixed. I'm no expert in nuisance law, and I have no idea whether that plant has our immunity, its municipality. But I would strongly recommend if the citizens wanna do something, other than just come talk to us, go talk to an attorney. Because if a group of citizens has standing to sue them for nuisance, a public lawsuit by citizens threatening them with millions of dollars of lost property damages and enjoyment of life, we'll go a long way to solve this problem. Their choice, are we spending twenty million dollars fixing it? Or are we spending twenty million dollars paying you for property damages to be fixed quick?
So, Sean, in addition to whatever additional information we can, have Garland provide on our December eleventh meeting, let's schedule an executive session with the town attorney to talk about appropriate steps to respond.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your comments tonight, we appreciate it. Then move now to fifteen, Mayor, council request future staff updates and agenda items.
Are we gonna have a light the tower ceremony? Was it the tower?
The tree lighting, oh.
That was the tree lighting, I'm talking about the tower.
Water tower.
The new water tower. Or is there some point when this lights are gonna be turned on? I noticed coming over here tonight, the lights went off. We haven't arranged for once, but if the council would like, we can. Well, I didn't know if there was gonna be one, because the light wasn't on, so, or maybe the tower was messed up, but...
Okay. Any other requests?
Mayor, I was just going to say this, um... We got the new water tower coming up, but at some point of time, we gotta decide what we might do with the existing tank. Whether it's return it in some capacity for storage or, or what else.
Why don't we do that a budget time, and then, so?
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Hopefully all of the council and the mayor, and some of our staff, heard from my wife, there is an SEF. Breakfast, kick off the fundraising year, of course, the spring gala, this Wednesday morning, eight AM at the Dallas Athletic Club, office six thirty-five. Everyone on the council is welcome. John, if you've got some other staff members you'd like to bring, you're welcome. Any citizens interested in coming, um, learning more about SEF and how it raises money and donated to the schools, please feel free to come talk to me afterwards. This is, uh, something for the whole community. Then briefly, since it's starting to get a little bit cooler outside, maybe about three or four weeks ago now, I distributed to the chief and Sean and I think the mayor a first draft of a recreational fire ordinance about a month ago. I take no pride of authorship. Chief may look at it and say, "There's lots of things we can do to fix this." Sean and Rashad may have some thoughts. Sure, once we get it up here in front of us, we'd have some thoughts, but, um, just wanted to touch the base on that and see if we can get that underway.
I'm sure we'll get it on the second next time. Counsel, any other? Sir?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, can I have a motion, please, to adjourn to executive session under section, chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D of the Texas Government Code, specifically discuss five fifty-one, one oh seventy-four personnel matters, public safety coordinator, five fifty-one, one oh eighty-seven economic development negotiations for Project Line, five fifty-one, one oh seventy-two rural property discussed, common thread. Have a motion due in seconds. Motion favor by Mr. George, second from Mr. Egan, to adjourn to executive session. So everybody understands the motion. All is in favor of the motion, please signify. Close by the same thing, we pass it six oh over executive session at nine twenty-eight PM. Ladies and gentlemen, I anticipate this executive session will last about an hour. Uh, I'm not certain, I think there will be some actions taken at the end of our executive session, but I can't confirm that a hundred percent. We thank you for being here this evening. You're welcome to stay here and wait for us to come out. If you're going home, please stay, I'll thank you again for being here. Counsel, take a ten-minute break.
Introduction?
Yes.
That is excellent.
And I totally love reading about the library. It's pretty impressive, we had a library.
Just go, I go all the time, I go all the time. I've lived it all along my life, so it ain't...
Hey, thanks for your comments.
And I'm sorry, that's just...
No, 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 no disrespect, you know.
So, hopefully something happens.
Something happens this time.
Good, good, I'm glad. Thank you so much.
Unfortunately, it may take some time, don't think about that. Appreciate it all.